Good morning, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. And good evening, everyone.
Cover all your faces.
Good evening. Alex is in Chicago. Good morning. And Ole is in Norway. He is good afternoon. And it's nice to have you with us, all right? And how are you doing over there?
It's good. It's soon dinner time and it's springtime and it's getting a little bit warmer now, last days. So it's, it's good, good to be in Norway. Of course, the Corona crisis is not funny, but at least we are safe and healthy. And that's the most important.
And your inspiration is just behind you with a photo bat and a sunset. It's beautiful.
Yeah, you can see it behind me now. You can see it here.
Yes, 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 yes.
Careful that it's not too hungry. We don't want you to get eaten while you're giving us a talk. That's great. Well, thank you so much for joining us. I'm gonna do a quick little bio of you so everybody knows who you are if they don't already. And then we'll get to your presentation, which I'm really excited to see. So Ole is from Norway and he's a pro wildlife photographer, author, expedition leader, and conservationist. Ole has a master's degree in natural resource management, resource economics, and environmental politics, and now uses his photography as a tool to generate interest about environmental issues in the Arctic and in marine ecosystems. He's one of the founders of Wild Photo Travel, which is a world-class photo expedition company that leads ship expeditions to polar regions, particularly Svalbard and Antarctica. In the past eight years, Ole has published seven books about nature and photography, and his images have received awards in the prestigious Wildlife Photographer of the Year and German GDT photo protests. In 2015, Ole founded Penguin World, and in 2016, he started the Polar Bears and Humans Project, which concluded last year with a 355-page book about hunting statistics, population changes, trophy hunting, skin trade, and climate change affecting polar bears. Over the course of four years of research, investigations, and interviews, Ole compiled data and analyses from the early 1960s to recent years in order to illustrate how the relationship between polar bears and humans has developed over time. He hopes that this book will inspire people to get more engaged in polar bear conservation. And that is definitely the effect it has. I had the pleasure of reading his book last year before it was officially out, and it has so much information in it. I can't even believe that you were able to do that in four years. I feel like that was more like 20 years of work, but there's a lot there. And thank you so much for doing that. And we're really looking forward to hearing more about that today. So thanks for joining us.
Ole, go ahead, please.
Take it away.
Okay. So let's see. I just changed to keynote.
Perfect.
Wait a second. We see why it's not working now.
Because it's supposed to.
Wait a second. Shoot. Okay. That was strange. Just do some talking while I'm trying to get this figured.
No worries.
I updated my OSX yesterday.
Ah.
So that might be...
So it might be being glitchy on you. Yeah.
Yeah, but I think you see it now.
There we go. Yep, we've got it now.
Oh, I just go into the presentation. And if there are any questions, then I think it's the right place to do it straight into Zoom. Is that correct, Michael?
That's fine.
If possible, that would be great. Yep.
Exactly.
Okay. So thanks for the invitation for this webinar. And also thanks to Ocean Geographic to be one of the main partners in this project, which was from 2016 until the book released last year. And it has still also been a lot of work after the book has released. So I will go through some of the most important things about polar bear management. And first of all, as a photographer, I've been working on climate change issues and also the Arctic. Arctic has been my second home the last 10, 15 years. I'm living in Norway and Svalbard is part of Norway. And I've done at least 45 expeditions to Svalbard in this time. And polar bear is my favorite animal. And 10 years ago, we're also starting to see the lack of sea ice and more polar bears stuck on land. And this was one of the pictures I took back in 2011, showing the kind of the melting world and the polar bear who was actually looking back at me. And I was feeling the polar bear was asking me, where is the future? Is there any hope for the future? And it was a little bit emotional moment for me. I also tried to photograph the ice, the polar bears living on thin ice, to also add what's under the sea ice. But this is what this looks like. For many polar bears now, it's not as solid ice content. It's broken up. It's a lot of water in between. But when we look at the statistics, this is defined as sea ice extent. If there are more than 15% ice, it's by definition sea ice. But for the polar bears, it need to be at least 50% sea ice to be favorable for polar bears. So this is about 50 in this picture, see about 50% sea ice extent. And when you look in the statistics, it's defined as sea ice, but it's a lot of water. So I wanted to see what, what has happened with the sea ice. And you might have seen this information before, but this is actually gathered from the NASA satellites. You daily have monitoring the sea ice extent in the Arctic since 1980. So it is by far the Barents Sea area where Svalbard and Norway and also franzoseflan in Russia is part of, who has experienced the most decrease in sea ice by more than 50%. It's a lot. And we see this on our trips in the Svalbard. But when we are looking at sea ice, lack of sea ice and polar bears, there are two areas in Canada which are usually used as a reference for climate change and reduce sea ice. It's Hudson Bay in Canada and also Beaufort Sea in Canada and Alaska. And you can see it's only 12 and 11% less sea ice since the 1980s. So when looking at the sea ice, I would at least assume that the population of polar bears are struggling more in Svalbard than in, in Canada, if you only look at the, at the sea ice. And sea ice is also important as a platform for polar bears to hunt, walk, sleep, and also sometimes mate and even have dens. And in Hudson Bay, the sea ice breakup has been earlier and earlier pretty much every year. So from 1980, it has been about two weeks earlier ice breakup in the summer. And also in the autumn, ice is freezing two weeks later. That means the polar bears have four more weeks to stay on land. And when they're staying on land, they are most likely starving. It's very little food for marine mammal on land. They are extremely adapted to a diet of marine mammals like seals and also whale carcass. They can find that on land, but the seals are usually on ice. So four weeks less time on the sea ice. If you look at Svalbard, Barents Sea, it's much, much bigger difference. From the 80s, the sea ice breakup has started in the 80s, in mid-July. But now it's already in June. We're talking about six weeks earlier. That's a big difference. But also in the autumn, it used to be freeze-up when the ice was starting to build up in mid-October. But now it's in end of November, beginning of December, and even some years in January. So we're not talking about four weeks longer time on land, but 12, three months. And that's a huge difference. I have to say, last year has been different. There has been a lot of ice last summer, last autumn, and this winter. So this year is very good for polar bears. But if we are looking at the trends, this is the statistics. That's what the NASA satellites have detected. So also looking at this, the polar bears in Svalbard should be more hungry and starving more than in, in, in Canada. And we see some of these guys, especially on the islands, polar bears starving not only three months, but maybe six or seven months. And they're burning body fat. So it's a very critical time for them. So when you come into the polar bears in Svalbard, one thing that really surprised me was the new updated population estimate in 2017. And the scientists concluded that the population was stable. It had not decreased. And that was a little bit strange for me, since all the statistics about climate change, sea ice reduction should, should include a decreasing population. Because it's a place in the world where the ice is retreating fastest and the polar bears are actually facing a very bad future. But the scientists say it's stable. And there are two main reasons for that. First of all, when the hunting was stopped in 1973, they have actually, last 45 years, they're still in recovery mode. So they're still kind of not hit the, the population highest point. So they're still in recovery mode. And also, it's the only place in the world without hunting. There no polar bear hunting in Svalbard, only about two in average. In, in Russia, there are no legal hunting, but there's still some illegal. The rest of the Arctic, there are polar bear hunting. So and also what shocked me in 2014 and was, was also a Kickstarter for this project was a talk by a scientist. He said they were killed about 800 to 1,000 polar bears a year. 1,000 polar bears. And I was shocked because with my background in natural resource management and wildlife management from both Norway and Alaska, and all the trips to Svalbard, I thought I was, I knew quite a lot about polar bear management. And there were maybe hundreds or at least not many polar bears killed by Inuit in Greenland and Canada. So I was very shocked and I was, and I asked this scientist if he could prove this information, because I wanted proof for it. I was really shocked. Because the polar bear treaty from 1973, which all the polar bear range states countries have signed, should protect the polar bears. But now I learned, you know, it's about 1,000 polar bears killed every year. So I, so I had two ways of dealing this. First, I tried to forget the whole thing, because sometimes in life, it's just, the easiest way is to just forget and go to the next thing. But I couldn't leave this. So I decided to start this project, the Polar Bears and Humans Project. So that's what I also will talk more about now. So I started to analyze and gather statistics about hunting. And, and this is from Svalbard. And you can see in 1973, they banned hunting. And after that year, it has been close to no polar bear hunting in Svalbard. It's, as I said, it's about average of two polar bears killed a year. But last eight polar bears killed in Svalbard, only two of them has been in self-defense. So the six other polar bears have been mercy kill, precautionary kills, or just mistakes. Problem people, not problem bears. So it's close to no polar bears killed in Svalbard at the moment. In Greenland, it has been a peak in around 2003 to 2004, when the Baffin Bay started to open, the ice were retreating, and they're starting to use boats for hunting, not only dog sledding. They started quotas in Greenland in 2006 and then banned polar bear skin exports from 2008. And after that time, it has stabilized around 120 to 145 polar bears killed each year in Greenland. If you look at Alaska, it's a little bit different story. It was quite a lot of hunting in the 60s. It's, this is trophy hunting. And trophy hunting was banned in 1972, and it has slowly decreased also the native hunting. And the main reason is there no commercial interest in polar bear hunting in, in Alaska. You cannot sell the skins. So why kill a polar bear which are not a problem bear? And also, I've lived in Alaska a year and I'm visiting Alaska frequently. And native people I talked to are not using polar bear meat as food a lot. So it's very little hunting. It's only 17 and 34 the last two years here. And even they increase the quota for the Chertsk Sea, the red line, the red curve in this diagram. From 58 to 85, they still don't kill more polar bears. So this is example of an area where there are no commercial interest in polar bear hunting. Why should they kill many polar bears? This is Alaska. And then we see a part in Canada who describe a completely different approach. From 2006, the hunting actually increased quite a lot. And I will soon show why. Because at the same time, the demand for polar bear skins also increased. And then the hunters with commercial motivation, they kill more polar bears. Because more polar bears killed means more money in. So this is how the commercial hunting shows in the statistics in real life. It's a completely different story. So just to summarize, you know, I could talk two, three hours about the statistics, but we'll not do that. It actually took more than two years to make this diagram, because the Canadian government didn't want me to give, to give me any information, the statistics. So I struggled for two years until I got help from lawyers in Canada. And with the Freedom of Information Act, we actually forced the government of Nunavut, government of Northwestern Territories, and Quebec to release all statistics of polar bear hunting. Not only the number, but where they were killed, when they were killed, even the GPS coordinates, the reason of the kill, and a lot of more information. So this just summarized how the nations have approached the management of polar bears. And Norway have stopped since 73, as I said. But Canada, after 73, actually increased in the 80s. When they, when the seal cut boycott hit the country, they actually increased the hunting of polar bears as an alternative income. And also the, the last years, it also had been a peak or an increase in the polar bear hunting in Canada, mainly because of the increasing demand. So the red curve is, is Canada in this diagram. So just to summarize the polar bear hunting, it has been 991 polar bears killed each year since 1963 in average. So it's a little bit shocking, because this is actually 2.7 polar bears each day. So if you have three meals a day, one polar bear is killed every meal you have. And that's for me, that's a shocking high number. So it took me three, four years to actually get this number. And yeah, I was really shocked. But even more interesting than the number is, is this sustainable? Can the population of polar bears sustain this huge amount of polar bear kills? That's an important question. And to answer that, you also have to look at the population of polar bears. Just for information, this is a huge male polar bear. You can see the neck is very thick. This also have scars on the back. That's a typical male polar bear. But about sustainability, polar bears, the population is about 20,000 to 25,000 polar bears. Some researchers say between 22,000 to 31,000, but around 25,000. And in the book I've been working with, based on the statistics I have, I came to a number close to 23,000 polar bears. So in that area, it's the number of polar bears in the world. And also another thing that's important is how, no, not how, but the reproduction rate for polar bears. They are very slow reproducing. They are living in a very harsh and difficult environment. And they also have a very high cub mortality rate. So they have a very low growth rate, maximum 5%, but in real world, it's usually around 3%. Some population even have lower, like two and even less than two. But around 3% is the growth rate or reproduction rate of polar bears. That means if you kill more than 3% of polar bears, you will experience a population decrease in average. But some areas have a higher reproduction rate, so you can actually kill a little bit more polar bears. So about what is sustainable management and, and population changes? So I, I will show you two examples of sub-populations in Canada and how the population changes have been last 40 years. And this is McLintock Channel in northwestern Canada, close to the border between Nunavut and Northwestern Territories. And the government thought there were about 900 polar bears in the 70s. You can see the 700 mark on the top of the diagram. And based on this number of 900, they calculated a harvest rate of 4.7%, about 4.5%, which is kind of the rule of thumb in Canada. And they killed more than 40 polar bears every year. And the problem was, there were not 900 polar bears in the area, and the reproduction rate was lower than 4.5%. So the population declined quite rapidly, especially in the 80s, when also trophy hunters killed the biggest animals. So at some point, even the Inuit told the government, there are no males, there are no big males left, and there are less polar bears. So they reduced the quota until 2000, where it was a population count, where they realized there are less than 300 polar bears in this area. It's not 900, it's less than 300. So they agreed to have a moratorium for three years. And then they, they had, they introduced a low quota of three polar bears in the area until 2006, where they increased it to 11. So they actually managed to increase the population a little bit from less than 300 to almost 400 polar bears in about 16, 17 years, according to the statistics. But if we look all the way from 1970, you know, it has been a huge, huge decrease by almost 50%. So in my eyes, this is an example of a population who has decreased. But when looking at this in Canadian statistics and official information, you can see McLintock is the green area, almost in the middle of the map. It's green. It's likely increase. And that's how can this decrease be converted to increase? That's a good question. So actually, I asked the manager, the head of management in Canada, is how can I do this? Is there actually just cutting the history? And yes, they just cut the last from 2000, and then you have a success story. So this is how you can use statistics to make wildlife management a success story. And they're using this as a way of showing that the quota system and the hunting management is successful in Canada. I don't agree in that. So another story, now not on a story, but another population is the western Hudson Bay, where Churchill is, you know, famous polar bear place in Churchill. And this is the most and best studied polar bear population in the world. They have done a lot of population studies and they are studying the bears. And not only one researcher, but there are teams of researchers. They are studying a lot. And in this area, this population was quite stable in the 70s and 80s and to the middle of 90s. But then the population growth rate, reproduction rate, starting to decrease because of the climate change and less sea ice, which I talked about earlier. So the latest population estimate now is less than 900 polar bears. And this has been very, very well documented. But in Canada, they have a clearer way of describing what is sustainable. They are not looking at the total population of polar bears, but only the females. So if they can keep the number of females stable, that's the red curve in the diagram, and then it's okay. So they have had for at least 30 years, a male-female selective hunting, killing two males for each female. So killing 3% of the females and killing 6% of the males, in average, you kill 4.5% in the total population. And that will balance the number of females. But the, the blue curve is a male, and that's kind of going the wrong direction. And that's what happened in this area. There are very, very few males left. And the females and female cubs are starting to be a problem, because they're coming to settlements and there are, there are no big males to scare them away. Or for some reason, they are more visited by these females. And also, what they want to do now is to increase the hunting. Now they see it's going down, but still they want to increase. And how can they do that? And so just wait a second. So how can I actually increase hunting in a situation like this? You know, everyone can see this is not sustainable. It's decreasing. It's the most and best studied population, polar bear population in the world. So what happened in 2018 was two people were killed in this area by polar bears. Two people were killed. And because of these two people, there have no change the management plan to reduce the population because of public safety. So that's the way to do it, to change the word sustainable management with innovative management. They had to be innovative, and they are now protecting the humans against the polar bears. And they're killing more polar bears and reducing the populations. And this, this change has just happened now in January, February this year. This change in, from sustainable to this innovative management is completely new. The interesting thing, before these two people were killed in 2018, the previous 30 years, more people were killed by polar bears in New York than in Nunavut. Only one person were killed in Nunavut and two in New York, in Suez in Europe. So it's interesting, two people are killed. So it's interesting, two people are killed and you change pretty much the whole management system, not only in this area, but also in Nunavut. They will now change, killing one female for each male, and also decrease the populations. Very, very shocking. Oh, just to describe what kind of level of hunting you're talking about. I want to use the example of this, this black, this rhino. And everyone know they are not living in the same area, you know, rhinos in Africa. Polar bears, 3,000, or maybe around that. And polar bears, no, sorry, and rhinos about 25,000. So the populations are 10%, but can be also down to 6%. So about double of polar bears. So they have similarities. What would it be for, and if the rhino was living in Canada? How would the management of rhino be in the Arctic? And if you look at the hunting statistic of polar bears, then we killed more than 8,300 polar bears in this time period from 2007 to 2016. And 6,115 rhinos killed in South Africa in the same time. So the more polar bears killed than rhinos. And also, polar bears has a lower reproduction rate. And for rhinos, it's a war zone. There are more than 100 NGOs fighting the war against the poaching. For polar bears, nobody cares. And if you look at the sustainable, sustainable management for an Arctic rhino, 10% of a population of 25,000 would be 2,500 rhinos killed a year. It's crazy. But that would be the management, a successful management of rhinos in the Arctic. But if you use the Canadian definition of sustainable harvest, this 2:1 male selective hunting, increasing the hunting by 50%, it would be 3,750 rhinos killed in Canada with the same management system. And I hope everyone understands this is crazy numbers. I've showed it here, it's about three times higher than the rhino hunting in 2014, which was a really, really big bad year for, with poaching. It's crazy, but this is the reality the polar bears are facing in Canada. They're using, maximizing everything and killing as many polar bears as possible. You know, I'm not, I don't, I'm not saying we are starting to manage rhinos for hunting. I'm against that. It's just to show you how this would be for an animal like a rhino, if, if that's we're living in, in, in the Arctic. So obviously, there are some reasons why nobody cares about polar bears and pretty much everyone cares about rhinos. And polar bear hunting, 90% is legal. 10% is illegal. For the rhinos, it's almost opposite. More than 90% is illegal and it's a small part that's legal. So for people, it's a big difference. When something is legal, then illegal. Of course, we have rights, we have laws, we have to obey that. But for the animals, the animal don't care if the bullet is legal or illegal. The only thing that matters is if the animal is available, available for mating and reproduce for the, for tomorrow and the next year. That's the only thing that matters. If it's a legal bullet or illegal, doesn't care. For the animal, it's the same, it's illegal or a legal hunter. Or it's a female or a male hunter. Or if it's a Norwegian hunter or a US hunter, whatever, it doesn't matter. It's life or death. Another thing is also human rights. Native Inuits in Canada have strong land agreements. And that's of course good for them. And everyone should have good rights. But in Africa, they don't have the same rights. They have been colonized by Europe for hundreds of years. And they don't have the same rights and traditions as Inuits and other native people. So it's also a big difference about the management system in Africa and especially in Canada. So this is just to show how the polar bear management is if you put a rhino into this territory. So I hope this is a wake-up call for at least some of you. And let's see. So the last part, I will talk about the reason for this high hunting. Why are people killing all these polar bears? It's not only for fun, it's, it's for money. It's a more and more commercial part than this, what you call it, subsistence hunting. You know, traditional historical, it was for subsistence use, for food and for clothes. Now with this price increase and increasing demand, there are more and more hunters motivated by the money than by traditions or history. So this shows the, the price for polar bear skin back to the 60s. And it was a peak in the left around 1973, when many skin buyers were afraid that not only Norway and Russia were closing down, but also that this would affect the Canadian polar bear hunting. So it was a huge peak in 1973, but then it has decreased until 2006. And what happens in 2006? If you look at this diagram, statistics about the five main importing countries of polar bear skins. It used to be Japan and then Denmark. It's also been traditional, big importer from skins from Greenland. But after 2006, Japan is close to zero, but then China is entering the market. You see the orange, orange curve, it's kind of taking over 70% of the market since the last five, six years has been China. Also Norway is still big, number four, and US until the ban in 2009. It's also been main importing countries. But the main reason for this huge increase in price and demand is the introduction of the Chinese skin buyers. This skin is from a retailer in Svalbard, Norway. And the price is about 25,000 US dollar for a polar bear skin. This skin is from China. This was from a store in Shanghai in August last year. And the price was 78,000 US dollar. That's quite a lot of, or a lot of money. And the mounted polar bear in China can be sold for more than 100,000, no, 100,000 US dollar. So it's a big money paid for the best and biggest skins and polar bears. The problem is that these guys are not buying their small, bad-looking or average skins. They're only chasing the biggest skins, the biggest, the fur and skins from the biggest animals. When, when we are at this level in price, it's close to 1 kilo rhino horn and 2 kilo cocaine and 2.5 kilo gold. So we are dealing with a market now that is attractive for illegal syndicates and companies or syndicates who are already engaged in ivory trade, rhino horn trade, what kind of other illegal things. Still, most of the polar bear hunting is legal, but it's also very difficult to track the trade in polar bear skins. So what about the hunters? You know, a polar bear sold for 78,000 dollars in China. That should be good news for the Inuit hunter. It should be good money for the Inuit. So if you look at the, the red curve in the bottom right, you see this dotted red line, that's the price paid to the local hunter. In 2006, in average, they, they received 250 US dollar for average polar bear skin in 2006. But they, they got a bonus of 50 US dollar for a prime skin from a big animal. In 2018, it increased to 1,750 US dollar for average skin and 450 US dollar for a bonus for a big. So even here, it's motivating the biggest to kill the biggest animals. So the hunters have received more. But if you look at this, the retail, retail price in China, only 18% of the value is back in Canada. Then where it's sold on the auction for a retailer in, in Canada for export, only 18% of the price in China is left. And the hunter is only receiving 2% in average, about 1,650 US dollar. So this is not very good news for the hunters. Here you can see the price. This is from 2017, 2018 in northwestern territories. This is a price for the hunter received when selling a polar bear skin. And it's very important to see, it will receive a big bonus to kill the big animals. So it will motivate the hunters to select for the biggest animals, the most fit animals with the best fur qualities. That, that's, that's the bears who will be killed. So it's not very good news for the hunters. So these are the animals, these are polar bears that, that's not killed. They're not targeted because they are small, they're not very healthy, and the skin quality is poor. So especially the trophy hunters, they are extremely selective for the big males. But also the native hunters, they have a tag, they, they permit to kill one polar bear. And of course, if they have a chance to kill a big male or a small, ugly, sick polar bear, of course, they kill the big animal and earn this 450 US dollar or more for in bonus. And this is scary because we have a climate change situation. It's increasing. And the animals that's left to try to adapt and try to survive this climate change is these less fit, smaller, sicker polar bears. And that's scary. This is selective hunting, the combination of selective hunting and climate change, climate, climate warming is really, really serious. And it's fueled by increasing demand and commercial skin trade. And this is reverse selection. This is a picture from the skin auction, main skin auction in North Bay in Canada. And once a year, they sell hundreds of polar bear skins. And most of the buyers are Chinese. And here you can see it's about 300 polar bear skins on this, on this floor. And this is how it's, it's looks like. The problem with this, until this auction is legal, most of it is legal. But the problem is when the skin is coming to toxidermy for skinning, you know, what's called tanning, tannery, to make the skin, it looks nice, I don't know the word exactly, but the tag, the metal tag that's attached in the fur is actually removed. And by law, in the Nunavut Wildlife Act, this tag has to be attached when exporting from Canada to Norway or to other countries. But the problem is the tag is more, in most situations, removed. And there's no way of tracking where this polar bear is coming from. It's very, very easy with duplicate import permits or, or trying to sell an illegal skin and convert it to a legal. So this is really bad, actually. And it's actually violating the siteest trade regulations. Oh, are we on time, Michael?
Very good. Go ahead, go ahead. We need this, this will be translated to Chinese and narrated in Chinese, so we need the full.
Okay, good. So it's, the, 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 the demand is increasing. And what I've done in this diagram is to map for each year the number of polar bears killed with, according to the average auction skin price. And if you can see at the, at the curve going slightly upward, it's a trend that is moving up and right. Meaning when the price is increasing, more polar bears are killed. And this is really, really, really bad news for the polar bears. Because if the, the demand is continued to increase, it will, it will push for more polar bear skins. And Canada did a report about polar bear skin trades. But they forgot to look at this relationship between price and polar bear kills. Or I believe I didn't want to do it. So I was attending the polar bear range date meeting last month and I asked specific for an updated report where this is linked. Because this is really, really bad news for the polar bears. But how can Canada fix this? How can they make, you know, here is the legal, the green area is legal. And then you have the gray zone, that's Quebec. There are no hunting quota in Quebec. There only an export quota of, I think it's now around 20, no, 30 something, polar bear skins can be exported from Quebec every year. But you can kill 100 polar bears, you can kill 200 polar bears. There are no quota on polar bear hunting in Quebec. That's really bad. So that's what I call the gray zone. We don't know exactly how many polar bears are killed in this area. But then we have the red zone, that's the hunting that's exceeding the quota. The quote, the Canadian quota is telling you how many polar bears are possible to kill legally. And in 2011 and 2012, there were killed about 660 polar bears only in, in Canada. So it was in the illegal, it was more than the allowed, maximum allowed hunting quotas. But still, nobody told about this, it just continued. So how can Canada fix this issue? How can Canada make it more legal to push the legal area to the right? And there are actually three things that happened now last years. First, they have redefined the word sustainable harvest. You know, always they have used sustainable, sustainable, sustainable when talking about their polar bear hunting and harvest. But now, the last two years, you see the word innovative management. They cannot use the word sustainable anymore because it's not sustainable. They have redefined the management to an innovative. Sounds also very good. Sustainable is a positive word, but innovative is also a very positive word. So that's how they're slowly increasing the quotas. And the other thing is they need to increase the population estimates. So they, they use, last three years, some of the population have increased a lot in numbers. And they use models with larger confidence intervals. So they have a larger spread and they can also have a mid-value that's higher than the previous mid-value. So that's, have been done for, especially for Baffin Bay, have been increased a lot. I've been increased a lot from two thousand to two-thousand-eight-hundred polar bears. And then, of course, you can increase the quota. And also, they also defined that polar bears are violating public safety. So we have to decrease the population. We must decrease because otherwise people are killed. Do we protect the people or do we protect the polar bears? We have to protect the people. So that's also how they can legalize higher quotas. So they actively decreasing the population of polar bears in certain areas to make people pleased, and especially the hunters and auction houses will be very pleased about this. And during this polar bear state, range state meeting, I asked the Canadian delegates specifically about this. How can they, how can they export polar bear skins from Nunavut where they actively are decreasing the population of polar bears? It's violating international laws and regulations that should ban export. They can still hunt for subsistence, but the commercial hunting has to stop. And this is just from a presentation on this range state meeting. And I've seen a lot of shocking documents last years, but I was shocked when I saw this. And just before this presentation, another scientist had a presentation about the climate change in Baffin Bay and how it affected all polar bears with lower cub survival rates, less females with two cubs, and the body weight was lower, the condition was lower. Everything, every parameter about the condition of polar bears were decreasing because of climate change. And then, just a few hours later, from the same government, they presented the new management of the same area, Baffin Bay. And now they will increase the hunting to killing five-point-seven percent of the population every year. Five-point-seven, that's a world record. And that's crazy. Usually, they have used four-point-five percent as a rule of thumb, which is still too high. But here, five-point-seven percent. And they're also based on this increased number of twenty, no, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-six bears. That's an estimate. It's most likely fictive. Not fictive, but what you call it, virtual bears. But when you have this big confidence intervals, the mid-value is higher also. Another thing, they are now changing to one-to-one. That means they are increasing the hunting of females a lot, a lot. Earlier, they had two-point-one, had two males to one female. But now they're killing one female for each male. So this is, for me, extremely shocking that they actually can present this as a reliable management plan. It's crazy, completely. So that's how we do it. So I would just finish with also economy in the polar bear trophy hunting, very briefly. Because there are still people out there who think that polar bear trophy hunting is important for Canada, for local settlements. They still think it's important. But this information is based on, actually, all studies on economic value of this trophy hunting is between 2004 and 2008, in the area where it's peaking. No Canadian reports about the economic value of polar bear trophy hunting after 2009. And the reason is, US banned polar bear imports in 2008. So all trophy, polar bear trophies were not allowed to import in 2009. Actually, it was opened again in last year, so they could import again. But I think it was only for the old polar bear skins trapped since 2008. So this import ban, just the whole trophy hunting business of polar bears collapsed in 2008, 2009. So the local value is the dotted blue line. It's the money paid to the local settlements. And that's about fifty-two percent of the total value paid by the trophy hunter. So in average, last ten years, it has been less than nine-hundred thousand US dollars is the local value of polar bear trophy hunting in the world, actually. Because it's only Canada allowing trophy hunting. And that's not a big number. I was actually interviewed in the local newspaper in Nunavut one month ago. Yeah, one page about trophy hunting. And I told, I said, and I was quoted, that polar bear trophy hunting is not important in terms of value, economic value in Canada. And surprisingly, two Inuit leaders supported this statement. That was, I was expecting everyone was trying to kick me hard because I'm not, I'm against this commercial hunting. That's interesting. But trophy hunting is extremely selective, killing the biggest, strongest animals, so it has to stop. So we need, we need an alternative. And this guy, his name is Robert Thompson. He is one of six boat operators in Kaktovik, Alaska, offering small boat polar bear viewing trips between August and October. So the short season, two-month season, they are only allowed to have six clients on board, in the morning and in the afternoon. So it's very short, only six boat drivers, but the economic value, with, you can see in the yellow-orange curve, is higher than the all polar bear trophy hunting in the world, local value. If we add there are two hotels also involved in this polar bear ecotourism, then the local value of this small settlement, there are only about three, four hundred people living in this settlement, the local value is double the whole polar bear trophy hunting economy, the local economy in Canada. That's interesting. Most people have not heard about Kaktovik at all. But they have forty, fifty polar bears around when they have this whaling season. And when I was there in September, it's polar bears into town almost every day or every night. But now people have been killed last decade. That's interesting. So the last I will show you is just what can we do, what can you do, what can I do, what can Michael do, what can Alex do? And first of all, the book. You know, I've spent a lot of hours, four years, making this. Oh, you cannot see it there, funny screen. But this, "Polar Bears and Humans" book. And if you want to get more involved into polar bear management, I encourage you to get the book. It's also a PDF version, if you don't want to have a paper version, it's also a PDF version. So spreading the information is very important. And here you can see the book available both as paper, hardback version and PDF. The second is, of course, to use this information and spread it to decision-makers. You know, if you only make a book, it doesn't matter. We have to get information to the people who actually make the decisions. That's involving meeting the people who are making the laws and regulations, who is in CITES and all this kind of governmental bodies. Attend CITES conferences. That's where all these people are meeting to make new laws, new regulations, to make bans or not bans. And also the polar bear range state meetings. I've just attended last month the polar bear range state meeting in Svalbard. And this is from Fairbanks, Alaska, two years ago. And in these meetings, there are about fifty people, and these people are making the management of polar bears the next years. So it's extremely important to spread information in this type of conferences where the people at minister level can be and actually hear the information and do something about it. But of course, most of you cannot do all these things. I've spent a lot of time last year to meet governmental people and CITES meetings and stuff. But if you can't do it yourself, I strongly recommend you to support an organization who is actively involved in this. And at the moment, People for Nature and Peace is an organization. I will, I am a technical advisor for it. And it's building a very, very strong team now for actually make some real changes for the management. So I strongly recommend to look into that. And if you want to support polar bears, make sure you don't support international wildlife organizations who just take your money and do nothing with it. Make sure it's going to real conservation, to the real polar bear protection. And also join a polar bear viewing trip. I just talked about Kaktovik. To travel to Kaktovik, to join a trip, you are actually paying money directly into the settlement of Kaktovik. And as Alex said, I'm involved in a company called Wild Photo Travel. And we had a photographic expedition to Kaktovik last year, and we're planning two next year. Great, actually, the picture behind here is from Kaktovik. So great opportunities for close-up bears. And you're supporting ecotourism, which is the answer to trophy hunting and commercial hunting. There are also trips to Svalbard, which we cooperate with you, Michael, and Ocean Geographic, to have clients up there. And I also hope in the close future that there are more opportunities to do ecotourism in Canada and Greenland, and also Russia, where the money is going back to the local communities. I'm not talking about only a ship expedition who is just not visiting anything, but where some of the guides, some of the communities are actually getting their money from this. So that's my four recommendations if you actually want to do something for polar bears. And this is my four, four kind of on the what-to-do list. Okay. Thanks for your attention.
Okay, I got a question here. Alex, can you look for the question in Facebook while I ask all about this question? The polar bear is listed in IUCN as a threatened species. And how is that the countries like Canada is not observing that IUCN status?
Polar bears are listed as appendix two species.
In CITES, but in IUCN, it is a protected species.
Yeah, it is interesting. It's different from territories and provinces. In Manitoba and Ontario, it's listed as a threatened species, like in US. But in Nunavut, it's not listed as a threatened species. It's, they actually want to have it as the least concern or no-concerned species because they want to kill as many as possible. But in Nunavut or in Canada in general, it's not listed as a threatened species. And that's because they want to continue, not only the subsistence hunting, but also the commercial hunting and trade.
I think I've also talked to you about this before. Is it correct to say that when you say someone can actually buy a polar bear skin in Norway, which is legal in Svalbard, and send it to Australia?
Yeah.
Is that possible?
It's possible. And Norway and Svalbard is used as laundry or what you call it, whitewashing laundry place. Because in Norway, still, there are no laws stating you have to have a tag attached to the skin of a polar bear. So you can import, like, I can import a polar bear skin to Svalbard without the tag. And actually, last time I checked or asked for tags in Svalbard, nobody had tags. So we can, we can import polar bear skins without tags, which is by law in Canada, illegal export. But in Norway, it's by definition, legal. And then, we need a new export paper for exporting to Australia. And then, we forget all the information from Canada and only the export paper from Norway is checked by the Australian Customs and CITES people. So it's easy to earn quite a lot of money on laundering polar bear skins at the moment. And I've talked very, very seriously to Norwegian government about this. And I hope in June, there will be some reaction to this loophole and laundry possibilities in Nor, not only Norway, you can do this other places too.
Okay, thanks. Alex, is there any question? Because you're running a bit over time.
Just, just one person was a bit more curious about the legality of natives, you know, First Nations people being able to sell their kills. So yeah, I know you covered some of that, but yeah, just was wondering, so native people can sell their kills?
Yeah. So if you're native, it's, most places are lottery system. Which, if you're a hunter, it might be thirty-five polar bears, forty-five tags, which means each tag, you can kill a polar bear. And usually, it's a lottery system where a lucky hunter gets a tag and he will kill one polar bear. Of course, he will kill the biggest one. But then you also have this problem bears. In some years, it has been killed more than ninety polar bears, like as problem bears. And it's kind of additional kills. Because in Canada, if a polar bear is approaching, you don't have to deterrent the bear, you can just shoot it. In Norway, you have to deter the bear, shooting is the last option. In Canada, you can shoot it, and most of the bears are not killed as problem bears around settlements, but actually in hunting camps.
Okay.
Well, that was very, very informative, you know, you learn a lot. No, I have read the book, but hearing from the autism service is very different.
It's different to hear it than to read it.
So yeah, thank you so much for doing this. And we hope to continue and contribute to your cause. Alex?
Absolutely. We'll have to come visit and see bears.
Yeah, we will have to go to China and reduce the decline for polar bears which we are going to deal with this lecture. And hopefully, when this COVID stop is over, we can all go to China in December because the exhibition plan for April is now, it's going to be moved to December now in China. So that's how we can do that and make a difference. Thank you so much, Alex.
Me too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon, have a good morning, good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.